Okay, we're ready to go.
I almost stopped my coffee.
All right, good morning, everyone. If you'll rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everyone. We will get to November twenty first, twenty twenty-three Meeker County Board Meeting underway. The first item up, we have public comment period. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak, now is an opportunity. Come forward, come forward to the table and state your name and, and where you're from and your business, so we have it for the record, please.
My name is Sam Wood, and I live here in Litchfield. And so, I guess I'm here to speak on the, the ordinance that's trying to be passed for the, the use of cannabis in public spaces. So, I, I honestly don't know how much time I have, and, but.
And should I, I'll just interrupt you, Sam. We could hear this, because we do have the public hearing just on that topic.
We are gonna have a public hearing specifically on it.
So I, I apologize.
Oh.
Well, we can, if you want to hold it.
Do we, do we split later?
We can hold that, because we will have opportunity for a public.
That's a separate one?
Yeah.
Okay, so I didn't know where it stood in this process.
No, that's all right. You're good. You're good. We'll invite you back up.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Sam.
That's all right, yeah.
There you go, yeah, that's warmed up.
Thanks for the intro.
All right, with that, we'll move on to, I have some years of service, employee years of service from September, October, just, these are the following people that have been with us for their first year, just completed their first year. It's Elena Larson in Public Health. Oh, boy, Sabarara.
Come on now.
What's that?
Come on now, you should know that ahead of time.
Well, well. Social Services, Sabarara Evenson. Amber Heine, the Sheriff's Office. Brian Fennerbach of Zoning. Lindsay Dev- Dev- Yeah, that's a French, devour, devour, of Social Services. Shelley Miller of the Assessor's Office. Those are, those six folks have been with us for one year, so we thank them for their first year. Then five years of service, we have Patty Hersberg down in Human Service, Human Resources. Jared Danielson in the Sheriff's Office. Those two have five years and ten years. Rebecca Ziegler out of Social Services. And our county attorney, Brandy Schiefleben, has been with us ten years already. So those two have ten and.
Already. Seems like twenty, Brandy.
I appreciated the paper, for the newspaper, quite younger then.
You start when you were twelve, or?
Wow.
Thank you, yeah.
And we have one twenty-year employee, twenty years of service, to Peter Suck over in the Sheriff's. We thank all those folks for their, their commitment to Meeker County, and we appreciate their service. I'll mention them. And then we will, next item up is our board meeting agenda. Look for a motion on that board meeting.
Mr. Chair, I so moved that we accept the agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bretison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing unaltered, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Ah, consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have approval of the board, or the November seventh board meeting minutes. Social Services, County, and Hospital Accounts payable. Approval of an on-sale liquor license for Darwin Rod and Gun Club. Approval of the Emergency Operations Plan. Approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Radiological Emergency Preparedness Grant Contract Agreement. And that is the consent agenda.
Chair, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I bet you're gonna ask for questions.
Well, we can, we can make a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I have a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Bretison. Now, is there any discussion or any questions for any of those items on there? I know I had one for Stephanie yesterday when I read through it, but I can't remember what it is, so I'll get with you. There's nothing serious, Stephanie, but I'm giving you a warning anyway. Um, if not, we'll vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, next item up, Anne Steinhaus, Feedlot Officer. Good morning, Anne.
Hello, I'm Anne Steinhaus, Speaker, County Feedlot Officer, and I am just coming for approval of my twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five um, delegation agreement work plan. This is basically our contract with Minnesota Pollution Control to get our, or to get the matching funds for what we provide, or what the county provides. And it says what we will do to get that, so. Um, a signature is no longer required. I just need approval from the board.
All right, Anne, and has, has the formula changed, or the dollar amount changed?
The dolla- Well, the formula hasn't changed. The dollar amount has changed. The legislature provided a one-time, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, by NEM, one million dollar increase, which changed to Meeker County's match as well, to, for the Feedlot program. So instead of one point, one point nine million for the state, they offer two point nine million. And that increased what Meeker County gets, but it also increases their match. And those numbers were presented when the, our budget, when the budget was asked for.
Sure, okay, all right. All right.
So Anne, has, you and I have been on inspections, I've been with you, but has the criteria changed for what you do when you do inspect, or is it basically still the same?
It's basically the same. I'm, I basically am looking for pollution issues. And try to, try to enforce, well, enforce those and mitigate those as best I can. And that includes record checks of, so any site I visit, over a hundred animal units has to provide me manure records, including soil, and any site over two ninety-nine has to provide soil samples or soil analysis. And all that gets monitored to make for the ergonomic rates set out by the University of Minnesota. That's what MPCA follows.
I had a question. I was reading through the materials, and there are two hundred and seventy-one sites within Meeker County that require inspection. So each one of those is over one hundred animal units?
No. They could be over as many as ten animal units. In a shoreland, of, you, in a shoreland, so within a thousand feet of a, of a, I don't even wanna say a lake, of a DNR-defined body of water. And so in Meeker County, there are many slews, swamps, wetlands, whatever your terminology of choice is, that qualify as that. If you have, if you have more than ten animal units within a thousand feet of a DNR-defined body of water, you are required to register per Minnesota seventy-twenty. Now, Meeker County's requirements are slightly stricter, but they don't require an inspection necessarily. But if you are over ten animal units, you re- I don't wanna say you requ- you are inspection-eligible, let's put it that way.
If you're within a couple of those various regulation parameters.
Yep, and seventy-twenty requires any site over fifty animal units to be inspection-eligible. So.
And I know that one animal unit is probably what, one steer, one cow.
It's a thousand pounds.
Thousand-pound animal, one horse, that kind of a thing.
One horse, one steer, depending on its size, one heifer, one Jersey dairy cow. One Holstein dairy cow would be one point four animal units. A cow-calf pair is one point two animal units. So it kinda depends. A large swine is point four. So any swine over three hundred pounds is point four animal units.
Does it take like twenty-five chickens to, you know, what, what is for poultry?
Depend, so, point zero zero three animal units is would be like a laying hen. Point zero zero five animal units would be a market or. Uh, no, a pullet would be more, but like a, a, a market bird.
A market bird, okay.
Uh, turkeys are, I'm blinking on that one.
Well, that's all right.
I wanna say point zero zero one animal unit.
We've been through all that before.
Yep.
Yeah.
I was, I was curious.
It's animal units.
Yep.
Yeah. Basically, roughly speaking, it's a thousand pounds to get an animal unit. So depending on, I mean, there are some standardized numbers, so that I, when I go out, I don't have to weigh, you know, a gift.
Well, no.
Or judge, but.
You have to do a little eyeball math.
Yep.
The other question I had was, out of those two hundred and seventy-one that were listed here as sites to be viewed, only seven percent of them need to be addressed each year, inspected each year, only seven percent?
To do, to, per this contract. Now, I usually do about, well, I do seven percent of, a minimum of seven percent. Plus, then there are a portion of this are ones that, this is where it gets a little difficult to, I'm not great at explaining it, I apologize. But we have some CUP inspections that are a portion of that. So they're the CAFO units, that I'm not, I don't have enforcement capability of seventy-twenty, but I can enforce per Meeker Counties. So those are ones that I don't get to count towards that seven percent, but that I also do. So I probably do more like fourteen percent a year of Meeker County inspection, or Meeker County sites. But that count towards the MPCA numbers, I only do seven percent. But on that two seventy-one, it's more like fourteen percent. I do right around fifty inspections a year.
And also, if you, there was a couple times in my area, we had some complaints, not you, but, so then you have to go address that, right? And I take trips back and forth more than once, obviously.
Right, and I do other things like, um.
Any, any expansion, or any, any changes anybody wants to do.
Well.
You know, a permit gets pulled, you're gonna have to.
And some other environmental upgrades, like the last two years, we've, we've had pits shut in Meeker County. And those are about four site visits apiece, to shut, to shut up, uh, LMSA that we're not using. And those aren't anything that will be in this delegation agreement. There's no, this is really my report card. This is how the state justifies giving us, Meeker County, the money.
It's a minimum that you have to do, right?
Yeah. This is the minimum that we have to do to prove to the state that.
Are there some that are inspected every year, like the really big ones? I'm thinking, of course, the forestman farms, the Jennios, the big dairies, the, the big ones. Is that every year? Or is this, because what I was doing with the math, if there's only a requirement of seven percent out of the two hundred and seventy-one, if you visit my house this year, and I'm not on the list, it could be eighteen years before you come back to my house.
But, but this is just for this delegation agreement, that she has to do, right? That's the amount you have to do.
She does a lot, a lot more.
And as you can see, one of the, one of the requirements is sites that have never been inspected in Meeker County, and there are still some of those. And I need to do five of those a year. That is my goal. Eventually, I'll get them all covered. But I'm still, that, that is.
Well, that's, there's, there's farms, what she's saying, that are in a different category.
Oh, yeah.
So the seven percent is like a base benchmark criteria for Anne herself, but, from the state.
But.
But there are other criteria within the.
Within the seven percent.
And I realize this is a portion of your position, you know, this isn't your full-time job.
Yeah, this is about, this is sixty to seventy percent of my position. Um, depending on the year, and that is tracked as well. And to answer your question, there are some sites that are done annually, and that's that, that weird number I was talking about, the ones that are CAFO sites, so that I don't have seventy-twenty jurisdiction, but Meeker County asks me to inspect them as part of their CUP. And some of those are on an annual schedule. The Planning Commission has, as they've realized, those sites have started, or from what they look like in the eighties to what they look like now, are much better. So some of those sites are now on three-year rotations, just because I don't get credit for them through the MPCA, so that if I'm inspecting a site that I don't get credit for, it's, it's great and wonderful, but it also takes away from me maybe inspecting a site that, if I can only do forty to fifty inspections a year with the paperwork and all the other things that go, are entitled, are entailed in those, because like I was talking about those manure plans, those all have to be, that, I have to take those back and, and analyze them and make sure that they're in compliance. So it's not just that the site is in compliance, it's that their practices are in compliance as well, and that's all stuff that's, that kind of thing is done offline. So, yeah, the larger sites, any, any site that has a Meeker County CUP is inspected at minimum every three years.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the County Feedlot Program Delegation Agreement Work Plan.
Thank you, Paul. I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
I'll second.
And I have a second by Commissioner Olbert. Is there any further discussion?
I, I'm sorry, but I have one quick one.
Sure.
So if we have somebody that's breeding, say, dogs, and they're licensed for eight hundred in Meeker County, which we have, who inspects that to make sure there's only eight hundred dogs or seven hundred, or not us? Is it the USDA? Nobody? Nobody from here does that? Thank you.
So dogs don't matter? It, it's only for meat, meat purposes?
Dogs aren't livestock. They don't fall under.
But I understand the USDA does some inspecting of puppy mills, so I was just wondering, being there in our county, who does that kind of inspection?
I do not know. I don't know if we have somebody.
We don't. Okay, thank you.
USDA, fall under like a state milk inspector?
Well, they, that's what's, was inspecting it not too long ago, but thank you, that was my question.
All right, with that, there's no further questions. All in favor of the County Feedlot Delegation Agreement Work Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Anne. And now, we will have our public hearing and approval of an ordinance relating to the use of cannabis in public places. Andrew, do you wanna?
I will start us off.
Start us off with that.
So I'll give us a little bit of an overview, and then the board can, you know, vote to open the public hearing and then seek public comment. So, we're here today to consider an ordinance that would prohibit the use of cannabis and cannabis-derived products in public places throughout Meeker County. Earlier this year, the state legislature adopted a new law legalizing recreational cannabis use for individuals over the age of twenty-one. The legislation does not directly address the use of cannabis and cannabis-derived products in public places, but Minnesota Statute one forty-five A provides local governments with authority to regulate potential threats to public health. As a result, several cities and counties across the state have adopted ordinances similar to what is proposed today. At the July work session, the board directed staff to begin working with the Meeker Area Partners in Prevention on a public use ordinance. MAP is a coalition of partners in the community, including Public Health, Social Services, Law Enforcement, Lamb, the City of Litchfield, and the Litchfield School District. MAP met in August and September to discuss the draft ordinance language. After which, a coordination meeting was held with the cities within Meeker County to meet with county staff to discuss a range of issues related to the new cannabis law. Each of the cities present at the meeting, including Litchfield, Eden Valley, Watkins, and Dassel, provided feedback on the draft ordinance and expressed their support. If the ordinance is enacted, cannabis would only be able to be used by individuals twenty-one years of age or older, on private property, or on the premise of an establishment, or an event licensed for onsite consumption. A violation of this ordinance would be a petty misdemeanor with a fine of up to three hundred dollars. During its regular meeting on November seventh, the county board voted to schedule a public hearing on the draft ordinance at this meeting today. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the board may elect to vote on the ordinance, provide direction to amend the ordinance, or table the ordinance for a future meeting. With that, I recommend that the public hearing be opened and comment be solicited.
Mr. Chair, move to open a public hearing.
I have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Johnson on a public hearing.
I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Bretison, on any discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a public hearing. Sam?
Yeah.
We're gonna invite you up by name this time, because we, we misled you to start off, so.
All right, my name is Sam Wood. I do live in Litchfield here, and, so, what I would like to, to comment on this ordinance is that, it's my belief that this ordinance is extremely over, um, you know, of course, now I'm gonna be at a loss for words, right? So, I think it's overstepping its bounds. I think it's, it's far, oh, it's, it's an overreaction to what a lot of people maybe don't understand and, and don't fully grasp, or, or some people maybe are scared of. I myself haven't always been a cannabis supporter. So, believe it or not, standing up here, being against this, you'd think that I would be somebody who's just a full-out user. Very, very few times have I used. Actually, only because the law has become enacted, have I even used one or two times. I do own and operate the hemp hut here in town, and, again, I had to educate myself on all of, all of the cannabis, all of the cannabinoids, all of the stuff that goes along with it. I've been following the laws, I've been learning, I've been educating myself, and I've, I've learned a ton about these plants, and I've learned a ton about the effects, the, the benefits, and what goes along with these plants. There's a lot of misinformation out there, there's a lot of fear. They are not the evil plant that everybody's fearing, and the, the ordinance that's trying to be put in place today is, is just an overreach of, I think, government control. And I do agree that there should be some, you know, some rules put in place. I do believe that parks and, you know, the main streets, and I do believe that there should be areas that, just like alcohol, and, and just like cigarettes, should not be placed for public use. But I think every single square inch of the county, other than your personal property, is, is just absurd. For people to be able to walk around and smoke cigarettes, for people to be able to stand outside of bars and smoke cigarettes, and not be able to use cannabis, is, I mean, it's discriminatory. We all know that cigarettes are far more harmful. We know that they cause cancer. Yet I have to walk through that cloud when I go use, go to these establishments. You don't go to the hospital and get a medical cigarette card, so that you can go use cigarettes to help your health, but you do get a medical cannabis card. So if this was a product that was harmful to your health, in the way that everybody believes it is, it's not something that would be used for medically. So, you don't just get high, you don't just get contact from being near it, from even just smelling it in the distance. That's not how it works. And I think there needs to be more research. I think there needs to be a little bit more understanding. And I think that you need to release a little bit of what's trying to be done today. I think you should be able to go out in the country and walk down a dirt road and be able to use it. If you live out in the country and you wanna go for a nature walk, I think if you wanna go down and walk down a nature trail, there's nothing wrong with that. It, it's just absurd the way that it's written today. And how are you going to enforce whether or not somebody's using an edible product in a public space? Are you going to watch them eat it? Are you going to grab it and take it and test it? I mean, just think about the logistics of how this is written, and the extra requirements that you're putting on law enforcement. It just does not make sense. So, I think it should be tabled. I think it should be looked at a little bit further with some common sense. And, you know, like, ultimately, that's just really what needs to happen. I think there's a lot of knee-jerk reactions from a county that, yes, we live in a smaller community, we have a lot of people that aren't used to some of this stuff. And, but I think that if you just take a step back, take a deep breath, do a little research, there's a lot more people out there that use it that you wouldn't believe use it. Growing up, I grew up in Wilmer. I got pulled over by police. Lots of encounters with police. Years later, I go out, get invited to a fishing trip out on the ice. Lo and behold, who's sitting in the fish house, smoking cannabis, the same officer that pulled me over. So, again, it just needs to not react so quickly. Take a step back and, and, and think about it, and learn a little bit.
So I, I don't wanna cut you short, Sam, but I think you made your point. I just, we're on a limit to two, three minutes, just so in case there's other people wanna speak to it.
And that's, and I'm, and that's all I really need to say.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, thank you, Sam.
Yep.
You make a good point. I was reading through the paperwork here before us, and what we were going to be talking about today, as far as an action item, the only allowable cannabis use by persons twenty-one years of age or older will be on private property or on premises where there has been a license. And, and, but you bring forward something that I, I hadn't really thought about. It's, we can see someone smoking and probably smell it, but as far as the eating of it, and we have Ryan here, our, our sheriff. If someone drinks at home, and then they go to a county park, and they're under the influence of alcohol, and they're acting somewhat erratically, we can test for that. How have things improved? Is there a way of testing if someone is eating the, the cannabis at home and then goes to a public park and starts to act erratically? Do we have a way of testing for those even things?
We don't have instant testing like we have instant testing for alcohol.
Okay.
And I don't think this ordinance really covers their influence in public. It's the actual use in public, because my understanding of what we're addressing.
Very good.
And again, um, again, the way this is written, it's, it's everywhere, again, so. Trails, dirt roads, tree. It's just, it's overreach in my.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Sam. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes a comment on, or, you can come forward? And just state your name and, and your address for the record, please.
My name is Gary Barnes, five oh four North Marshall, Litchfield. I, I have to agree with some of the statements of Sam. I believe that this ordinance is an overreach, even though a number of counties have, or cities have put themselves together on it. The, I think what we need to realize is the state of Minnesota has authorized the use of cannabis for personal use. And I lived in Missouri for a number of years, and they went through all of the contortions, I guess, and that state proved it as well. The, the people in this country, or in this state, and other states have decided we wanna be able to have accessibility and the, and to be able to use cannabis. The biggest thing about this proposed ordinance is, in my view, is that we're, we're in fear of children getting a whiff of cannabis. And I just don't think that's a reality. I, I just, you know, smoke from a cigarette is probably more influential than smoke from a cannabis joint or a pipe or something of that nature. And I guess the last thing I'll say, and to conserve time, is that I really disagree with the penalty that has been assigned. I think it's way overboard, the three hundred dollars for if they're pinched for smoking a joint out at the lake or something like, I, I just, I, I, I think that's overstep. The new ordinance, it's, it's a new product, it's a new adventure, if you will, and. The new ordinance, it's, it's a new product. It's a new adventure, if you will, and I think, you know, stepping with heavy boots is the wrong thing to do. I, I would, I would encourage moderation in, in, uh, in dealing with what is considered a offense.
Thanks, Gary. Is there anybody else that, you can come forward?
Is that already in place? He mentioned a three hundred dollar fine? Or the, that, that hasn't been determined?
The ordinance, ordinance up to three hundred.
Correct, up to. Okay, thank you.
Richard Barnes, uh, live, uh, two hundred sixtieth street, just west of Litchfield here. Uh, just wanted to share a little bit. Uh, I have some kids and grandkids in Colorado. As everybody knows, Colorado is a legal state. I used, I'd been there for fifteen years and I would go out and I would always have elevation sickness, stop, stomach headaches, couldn't eat, couldn't sleep. Once they were legalized, I went to their, uh, establishment and I told the young fellow that and he said, come over. So I went over to his station and it was a vape pen. It was a three-to-one mix, so C B, C B C and the T H C. Uh, C B C is the medical side, T H C is the, the other side. And, uh, I took that pen home and plugged it in and I used it and it was like, flipped the page. It was unbelievable. I could eat, I could sleep. Uh, it was more the medical side, but that's, she, he said, that's what I needed for the elevation. They live at seven thousand feet. So I just wanted to share that with you that I had, and I also agree with Julie on the, on the edible part of it, you know? It's not just the gummies, you know, it's brownies, cookies, you know, a, a bunch of different stuff with a bunch of different levels of T H C. Drinks also, we have, you know, canned drinks. So, uh, I would also, uh, encourage the board to think about this, let alone or maybe not step too hard on it and, and, uh, think a little bit more, maybe do a little research on it, so.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to make a comment? Hear anyone? Anyone going forward? Look for a motion to probably close that public comment period at this time?
Some second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, signed by Commissioner Obergefell to close the public comment period. And is there any discussion on that? If you're none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Mr. Chair, I would like to add that we did receive one written comment.
Okay.
Uh, and that was from Miranda Goan, came in early this morning. She wrote, would you please pass this ordinance as it, as is with regard to smoking in public spaces? No smoking on county roads and especially trails. How about the campground at Lake Coronas? We would, uh, that would be good to, with banning it. I have asthma and I'm also allergic to secondhand smoke from tobacco or marijuana hemp products that are smoked. The other issue is quality of life. We're out here on trails or county roads and our physical, mental health and not dealing with offensive, pungent secondhand smoke that smells like skunk that can just reek. Despite what T H C addiction profiteers claim, it is harmful to breathe of many carcinogens with exposure to secondhand smoke equal to or worse than tobacco. It may be, it, it may be too late, but it is a drug. Uh, it may be lower potency, but in regards to edibles, for example, they can con- consume more, which can cause health issues, especially for those who are young and elderly, and provides a, a, a link to smart approaches to Minnesota uh, organizations website. So that was from Miranda Goan.
Does she, does she still love Meker County?
Uh, she signed it as signing for Litchfield, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Andrew.
I'm curious what some of the current regulations are. Now, she mentioned like Coronas Park and so on. Is, is it legal to, is it legal to smoke in a public park? Is it legal to have a beer in a public park? If I'm camping, can I sit outside my camp, camper and have a beer and, and a smoke?
Yes, um, per our current ordinances, I believe you can have essentially the equivalent of a six-pack per person in our public, in our county parks. I'm not sure what the specific regulations are all in the city parks across the county. Um, but that is what it is for, um, county parks. The recreational cannabis law is, is interesting the way that it's written. It specifically allows for the use of cannabis in, on private property, on someone else's private property as long as they allow it, or on establishments that have been licensed for onsite consumption. So it doesn't speak to pro- public property, but it also doesn't say that it's allowed on public property. Which is where we kind of end up in this gray space of, if you read it clearly, it's only on private property that the state law allows it. But there's no penalty for, um, consuming cannabis products on public property. So that's kind of how we end up here and that's where other counties and cities have seen that there's a need for local, um, regulations in order to provide that sort of a penalty in the event, you know, typically with this sorts of things, it's complaint-based. So when law enforcement receives a complaint, an ordinance such as this would allow them to have a tool in their toolbox to be able to address a complaint.
And Brandy, you were looking into this, of course, and one of the, the base documentation that you were going to begin from was what was already in place for alcohol and cigarette. Am, am I correct in that? Are we following some of those same parameters of, of use?
So the reason why we discuss those two ordinances is because we use the same chapter one forty-five A, public health exception. So under the health except, public health exception, that's what this qualifies for. And so that's why I brought those up. Obviously, they might be a little different restrictions, but the county adopted a county-wide restriction on those.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, just for a point of clarification, we s- we share two lakes, one with Wright and one with Sterns, Coronas and Collinwood. And how do we bump up against them with their ordinance? How does it look? Are we very similar to theirs?
Wright County's, the Smears Wright County's ordinance, as far as Sterns, they're specific to general areas of restriction.
And, uh, I can speak, the city and valley, I know they're gonna restrict it within their parks, no matter what we did, within the city parks. So they were, they were in the meetings that we had and they were, um, they were fine with the way they were. To that regard, so.
And we've had input from the other cities within Meker County. Is that yet to come?
Though that's accurate. We have. A- as I stated at the beginning, we had a coordination meeting where, where we invited every city across the county. Four of them attended, Litchfield, Eden Valley, Watkins and Dassel. Um, where we discussed the ordinance in depth with them and they provided their feedback and, and as I said, provided their support.
And they're on board with, with this, yeah.
And the sheriff's office was represented in those meetings and the county attorney and I mean, we good discussion, robust discussion on those meetings, so. So I guess we're at the point where, if there's anything, any other questions?
So I struggle a little bit with the edibles. I don't, um, so what, what's legal now, Delta nine, is that what it's called?
Delta nine is the exact same thing as you see it. Delta nine is Delta nine is, it is one hundred percent, it's the same chemical. If you look it up scientifically, it is the T H C.
Well, I'm not gon- I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna debate it, cuz I'm not an expert, but I will tell you, I have a friend that is a regular smoker and claims that it is not as potent as.
It is, it is the, it is the scientific term that, that is what it is.
So a lower potency hemp edible? So that's gonna be, you can't use that. Explain that to me, F, a real F if you can, Brandy, please. Well, I'm just gonna get an explanation here. We're not gonna, the public hearing is closed.
What are you needing next?
Well, I mean, so a lower po- just tell me why that's in there, but tell me what it means. So they can or they cannot use that either? You're gonna ticket somebody for having an edible? I mean, people use them to sleep. They use them for different things.
Yeah, this is for defining what would be considered hemp derived.
So that if you pick somebody up and they have that, that you could ticket them with a fine of up to three hundred dollars?
But that's not the restriction. They're allowed to, they're allowed
That's what they're allowed to have?
Correct.
So that's the lower, that's the lower potency that's allowed? I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
It would, it would not be allowed in public spaces.
Yeah, but.
It would be allowed in, in private property, you know, if, if, uh, the example that you had given of someone wants to use it to help sleep. That's absolute, I mean, it's allowed under state law, so that would be allowed. It would be prohibited in public spaces and, um, prohibited by, um, a minor.
I'm not sure. Well, I understand the minor part, but I'm not sure how you're gonna enforce that.
So the allowable uses are gonna be for medical.
Right.
And then for these, what we defined as lower potency. So those are what you're already finding. Correct. So that's included as a definition for what we have defined in subdivision B.
Well, and I think.
Was subdivision five prohibited access?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I, I should have clarified that. In subdivision five, the prohib- prohibited acts would be including that as well. Based on the levels that it has consistent servings that contain no more than five milligrams of Delta nine.
How are we going to enforce that?
So state law already identifies, the definitions come out of state law. They come out of statute. And so state law regulates how much of, you know, Delta nine or whatever, T H C can be in different products. And that's a completely different regulatory framework from what we're talking about.
Well, that's my question. That was what I was trying to say in the room.
There, it, it would be a challenge for us to be able to, you know, go in and talk to a person who's in the park and say, well, is this point five or less, or is this point five or more? There would have to be a test that would occur, but, but that's a different issue. The different issue there is, did they purchase it from a product within Minne- or from a store within Minnesota? And if they did and it's above that, well, then that store is in violation for selling something that's above that. So we're, we're talking about two different issues here. That issue is more on the state's licensing side of things. What we're talking about is regardless of how much T H C is in that product or how much Delta nine or whatever, you know, cannabinoids in the product, it's that, that use in the public space. That's what we're talking about today.
Well, I struggle with that part a little bit because that just doesn't even, I mean, so I'm sitting out in the park and I have an edible. I mean, what, you know? It's not affecting anybody. Number one, I'm not talking about minors here. I'm talking about adults. So it's not affecting anyone and, you know, I hate walking through cigarette smoke anymore, so I understand the smoke part of it. I truly, truly do. I just, I'll tell the story about when I was in Vegas, it was horrible walking down the strip. It was and so, but I struggle a little bit with that part because the, what part are we overreaching on this? I mean, Brian, do you have something to add to this or I, I imagine you've been in on the ground floor of this, but I just don't.
The state of Minnesota doesn't allow it in public places right now anyway.
The edibles?
Certain T H Cs are allowed to be sold, but the way the statute writ is written, they're such a gray area. That when we look at what happened in other states, the public outcry and public calls, what are we supposed to do at law courts when people are complaining about it if there's nothing we can do about it? That's what this is covering.
Well, I unders- I I understand that, but I mean, I don't know why edibles, I'm just, I'm gonna go back to the same thing. I just think edibles. I understand what he's saying to it.
And I think, I think there's a point here too that, uh, um, like an edible product, as these ordinances come into play with countywide and statewide, um, it's still illegal federally. I mean, we have to understand that, but they're gonna design products that, number one, their retailers can sell legally without getting into trouble and products that people can use in public places that are below thresholds. So it's, it's, I don't, I don't think it's a big issue. I don't think it's, I don't think somebody sitting in the park having edible, number one, I don't know if you put a cough drop in your mouth. You know, I mean, I don't know what you put in your mouth, so I'm not interested in checking or calling. I'm not gonna be the cannabis report card guy, you know? So I think the, you know, the sheriff is right. I mean, unless you're causing an issue in a public place, the, the retailers will provide the products that people can use in public places with regards to how the state and local laws are, are, uh, designed. So as long as we're following a li- a line item that's close to our neighboring counties, you know, and, and probably mirrors most of them. Um, and the other piece to it is you can always, uh, change restrictions and, and lighten restrictions as things roll out. But it's very difficult to add restrictions if you open the door wide and let everybody smoke it and do whatever they want, wherever they want.
Well, I would never, I would never vote for that.
I know, I know, but you understand where I'm going. It's easier to change things moving forward incrementally than try and repeal them once we enact them.
So Brandy, can you explain to me what the state stat- statute actually says? I'm very confused about, so what did they say? When they passed, when they brought, when they brought this problem into
So there is no, the law took effect on August first of twenty twenty-three, but they allowed the local governments to be able to make the regulations, regulation decision. So right now, they said, essentially, they're saying each county or city needs to come up with a decision on how to regulate this because the state did not want to do that. I don't have the information on how Colorado, uh, and maybe Sheriff Cruz, who is more familiar with what's going on in Colorado. Was that a similar process in Colorado where the state just let the local units decide? So I don't
So they said it's legal, but now you do what you want with it?
Correct. You figure out how you wanna regulate it and control it. And then there were proposed ordinances that were established throughout the state that said, here are some, um, ordinances that are legal. And so different counties were adopting them, different cities. So if the county were not to adopt an ordinance that would restrict it in all public places, then the cities, the smaller local governments could also go forward and have it where they could restrict it in their local parks and I think the bigger issue is gonna be when we start talking about regulations and what that's gonna look like for establishments and how we're gonna be controlling. That's gonna be a, a, a heartier conversation. That's not today, so I just wanna be clear about that. And I think if you're looking for public health concerns, I think then you would
I was just gonna ask Diane to address that a little bit. Do you wanna address that a little bit, what your concerns are as public health? Meker public health.
Excuse me, the biggest concern would just be exposure to children
To children.
And the general public who don't, aren't either using themselves or wanting that exposure.
Like tobacco.
Yes, very similar. It was modeled similar to the tobacco ordinance.
But tobacco can still be used everywhere.
True. Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments here. You know, each one of the folks that came up and spoke today made some valid points. I mean, you don't get a medical card to use cigarettes to help your health. You can for cannabis. How do you enforce edibles, the use of them? You even brought that up, but putting in a cough drop. Um, Mr. Barnes feels, uh, three hundred dollars is too much, but that figure is up to three hundred dollars. It's not a fixed three hundred dollars. And you described your elevation sickness and how it helped. Um, I have a brother-in-law who lives in Colorado who uses it to help him sleep. So I do know a little bit about the effects, but then we have Miranda, who asked us to pass it as is because of the issues that she has. So I think we can always find reasons not to and always find reasons to. We're charged here today, or whether it's today or if it gets tabled to another meeting, to do what we believe the folks that elected us to do, want, and that is to make sure that we put something in place that is enforceable and if need be, can be done legally. And so And so that's our charge today, is to find the best solution for Meker County. That's my comment.
All right. Thanks, Paul.
Well worded. What I see here is just, just a little bit of getting started with this topic. And then, as it even says here, things will be changing in twenty twenty-four. When will the state be coming forward with, with criteria to to help cities and counties? There, there will be some changes made, but not until.
So not, not on this issue. So the state is working on, with the office, they're working on establishing the Office of Cannabis Management. And then um working on developing a licensure process. Um, local governments have a role in that licensure process that we know already because it's included in the statute. We also have the ability to have certain regulations regarding to time, manner, and place of, of business operations. And so the Planning Commission has already started that process of discussing that to come forward with a recommended ordinance for your consideration at some point in the future. We know that the state is projecting that they will begin issuing licenses by January first of twenty twenty-five. So that's our timeframe that we have to establish our regulations surrounding it. So that, that's a process that is ongoing. That's the change that's going to occur. Does not affect the issue that we're discussing today though.
I would just make a comment. I currently, well, I'm in a transitional housing, I'll call it, in between, in the process of moving out to the farm. And so I've been living in an apartment for a year and a half and we've already had cannabis issues there where they were growing on the second floor and uh and some of they had post signs that basically stating that it's legal in the state, but not in public housing. And so it cleared it up because it was very evident that we had issues going on there, so.
So, so when you get to enforcement, are you, you're gonna, so will these be, if somebody is selling it? Then is it gonna be the same kind of enforcement as with tobacco and minors, et cetera, et cetera? So Brandy, is it gonna be?
Right now, actually, the sale of something of cannabis is a relatively low offense when it becomes juveniles or um adults.
I'm sorry.
Depending upon the quantity.
I'm assuming somebody's gonna be selling this around here.
You're talking about in a retail?
Right. Retail.
Yes, yes. From a retail perspective, there is a um, like I said, there's a licensure framework that's gonna be in place. Included in that is there's um compliance checks that the county is, is required to do on a periodic basis. And we get to establish how internally we manage that process.
So that'll be another public hearing and another.
That'll be part of our ordinance going forward, yeah.
So will that be a pub- include a public hearing?
That any, any, the, the zoning ordinance will include a public hearing. And that will likely be conducted by the Planning Commission, correct? That'll be conducted by the Plan.
January twenty-five is when that.
Correct.
For this sale. So we've got a year to get things in place there.
We're really with this ordinance, just dealing with use.
Yep.
Yep.
Just where, just the where.
Sales, no, not just use.
It's not, you can't, it's not like that. It's just, just where, just locations. Is there any other questions? All right. What do we wanna do with this that's in front of us?
We are one commissioner short. Today, would we prefer to have this vote be when all five are here?
I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I don't know. I'm just asking that as a question.
I would like to uh probably table it. I wanna look into and I, I apologize, I should've done a little more work on this probably. But the edible part, I have to understand a little better, so. I, I want, I do wanna say that we have an obligation to protect our youth from this kinda thing. And I've heard a lot of wonderful things about marijuana, but I could tell you some horror stories about it too. From things that happened in my family and probably others at this table have the same thing, so. I'm a little upset with the state of Minnesota for, again, putting something on the county that, right?
Yeah, they leave the, dump it in your lap.
So with that, if nobody objects, I would make a motion to table this until I'm gonna have some more questions and maybe until we have a full board, if that's okay.
I have a motion, but.
Are we tabling that to a specific date?
I don't have, I mean, do we have, how long do we have?
There isn't a specific time for it.
Okay, so I, I really wanna look into this edible part a little more. I'm gonna be gone, uh, so I don't.
I, I would, I would suggest setting a specific meeting, so I know when to bring it back.
Let's, let's start.
December nineteenth.
Who would you like to do?
Oh, December seventh is our next meeting, December nineteenth.
How about the first meeting in Jan?
Make it a January meeting?
Possibility.
Be January second then? Will we meet on the second?
Yes. You haven't established your schedule for next year yet, but I imagine you'll meet on the second.
Okay.
And in the meantime, I would like uh Mister Barnes and if you wanna send an email on how you would like to, what you think how this should look. I'm not saying that I would vote that way, but because I, I can agree with some overreach in some areas, but when it comes to what we've gone through with children and secondhand smoke, et cetera, et cetera. And when you talk about Colorado, I would hesitate to take a pin from anyone with the fentanyl the way it is today, so. I'm just saying.
Mister Chair, I will second the motion made by Commissioner Olberg to move table it to January second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg, second by Commissioner Johnson to table the cannabis ordinance until January second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thanks. Phil Schmalls, Public Works. Morning, Phil.
Public Works Director, shifting gears a little bit. Um, here to ask that you considers uh recognition of support and sponsorship for Kingston, City of Kingston Local Road Movement Project. Program, project. Uh, the city's working with a consultant seeking about one point one million dollars to make improvements on uh three different roads in the city of Kingston. There was a map included in your packet. Two of those roads happen to be county-state aid highways through city. Um nineteen and twenty-seven and the other is seven hundred and seventy-second avenue. The improvements that they'd be seeking funding for on the county-state aids are just for the city's share of those projects. Timeline on those projects is uncertain. Sometime in the next three to four years is what we're thinking. Uh, as part of the LRIP program, the county must sponsor any entity under five thousand population. They're not a state aid city. They're under five thousand people. Um, and sponsorship means the money would flow through the county. We provide some oversight with their process.
Phil, can I ask a question? If, let's say this was a twenty twenty-six project and they applied for LRIP. They could only do that once. They couldn't apply for this year and then apply again next year and, and kind of.
You mean if they were successful?
Yeah.
Um, I think if you already secured LRIP funding up to the maximum amount, which I believe it, it's one point two five, I think, for this listation. If you hit that limit, then no. But let's say you applied for a half million and then you wanted to apply for a half million more. I, I don't know anything that would make that not possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this project?
Mister Chair, I'd move to approve a resolution sponsoring and supporting the city of Kingston's LR, uh, RIP funding.
LRIP.
Applica- LRIP funding, application for work on portions of Casson nineteen twenty-seven and seven seventy-second avenue, seven hundred and seventy-second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg.
I'll, I'll second it.
And a second by Commissioner Bredeis. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, this is the resolution, so have Cory take the role, please?
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Danny's kinda, he spent all his money over in District Four.
Well, he had his chance.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Phil. All right, Greg Use. Greg.
That guy, yeah.
Greg Schultz, Land Use Director, today we've got five items on the agenda. Is the amazing farmyard, rural tourism business, just west of Eden Valley. How many of you are familiar with this, but this has been in business since they first got a CUP for this business in uh dog breeding kennel back in two thousand one. In two thousand ten, they got a CUP for agri- agri- tourism business. Kinda what we know it as now is amazing farm. Now what they're planning on doing, they're asking to uh expand their current CUP to a rural tourism business. According to our ordinance now, to that uh, construct an event center that will have a large open area, secondary hosting room, outdoor patio, food prep kitchen, maybe a bar, area dressing rooms and bathrooms. And this is to house uh like weddings, receptions, family reunions. Things like that, company picnics, graduations, retirements, birthday parties, et cetera. So you can see there, the map to the right, that's gonna be the event center that's gonna be coming in first. Future plans, maybe in the future for a kitchen bakery. And maybe kind of another accessory building off to the east. It's gonna have like a foam ball pit, maybe birthday party type. Area for birthday parties and rooms for various meetings and things like that. They're asking for about twenty years on this interim use permit. I'm not sure they're thinking of the event center, they're thinking of all buildings, one hundred and twenty by two hundred. It's the size of the building they wanna maybe put, depending on cost. It all depends on cost. Haven't got their numbers yet, so I'm not exactly sure if we're gonna be able to build something that size yet or not. Parking, they got plenty of parking out there. They've got thirty-some acres they can plan on the parking area. State of Minnesota, they have the access, it won't change anything. They had to put a turn lane in for their two thousand ten CUP. So that won't change on that. There was just one, one neighbor, Ralph Wimmer, stopped by. He was part of it. He was wondering how the expansion was gonna in the future could possibly affect agriculture or hunting lands in the area. And the short answer to that, I think, is it shouldn't, shouldn't affect anything because it's not gonna go out of the current property zones. Restrictions for feedlots, the same setbacks as it was before and things like that. So it really shouldn't affect any of the agriculture, future hunting. That's around that area currently, that's currently happening there now. There is a fence around the active part now, all fenced in, with security.
And Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, that's like seventy-eight acre, the parcel. Yeah, they have, it's a small eighty or whatever.
And so there's already a turn lane on one side of it. Is there a bypass on the other or is that? I'm just thinking, two hundred cars exiting, entering and exiting for an event. I was just wondering if there was.
They made the comment they'd already had events out there to host twelve hundred people. And they haven't had an issue with. And we haven't had a complaint in a long.
Okay.
Any complaint from that.
This currently, where the parking lot is there, they, the, it's just grass to them, as you head west, but they mow it and it's they put cones in, I mean, they park, well, then that's odd. I mean, they got acreage wise, they have.
So.
There were conditions that they can't park on the road.
Yeah.
I meant, I meant to get to this and I had another thing, but so they're breeding, they're, they're licensed for like eight hundred animals for dog breeding purposes.
Six hundred, yep.
Okay, well, when I looked, I thought six hundred, six hundred, eight hundred. It's a lot, right? So where are the barns from there? Do you know? Where they house the dogs?
That's in those two big buildings, I believe.
No, it's the south, it's off the top of the map. So the main, the dogs are. It's separate, with separate entrance. That's where they.
That where their house is?
But they, the sale, the, or, I don't know what, I, I'm gonna screw this up. So I'm not doing that.
Well, that's fine. I was just wondering.
They do have dogs in the, in the one building there, like the sale, like, you know.
They bring puppies in to sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, into, into that part.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so, so they have puppies in there and now they're gonna serve food and do all this kinda stuff.
See those two buildings there in the red there? That'll, that's where the. They also have other animals.
Puppies are down.
Yeah, they have goats and different.
They have goats and they have ewes and things like more exotic animals, still have a very sell side of the property. That's regulated by the Department of Agriculture.
The dogs?
No, I don't know about the dogs.
Well, I'm afraid.
But the other, other lifestyle animals are, they get inspected.
So Meker has no inspections out there for the animals?
I did a quick search because it came up earlier. The commercial dog breeding licensing is done by the Minnesota uh Board of Animal Health.
That's the inspection?
They handle the licensing and the inspections, yeah.
That sounds.
They got a special permit from Meker County when they started it, because I look back at it.
CUP.
And, and what's the name?
The Minnesota Board of Animal Health.
But I think, I think the USDA does the inspections.
So does this CUP coincide with their first one, or is this now an umbrella?
It'll umbrella over the top, expand the use of the property.
This is a twenty-year permit? Is this typical? To allow something for twenty years? Will there be inspections? Will there be reviews of this business and their expansion within that twenty years? That seems like.
Well, when you, when you get into the restaurant and bakery business and you've got the Department of Health doing inspections and they're involved, but I would worry. So if they're gonna do liquor, they're gonna have to come back to Meker for that. And then you're right on a highway, they're not gonna be parking on the highway, obviously.
Correct.
They have one X, they have one way in. And they have a lot of area to park, I think, right? So was that discussed? I, I'm sorry, I didn't get to this meeting, but.
They have, they have, they have, they can make bigger part. I mean, they've got acreage.
And they're still gonna be zoned, so then will they be zoned commercial?
Agriculture.
They'll still be zoned agriculture.
What a rural tourism business allows in the A- A- district.
And what is the puppy mill? Is that agriculture too?
That was in the egg district, it can be allowed, but the CUP, that's a separate conditional use permit for the property that doesn't go away.
It, it indicated in here that they're currently being taxed as commercial property.
Yes, even though there's own.
A portion of it is.
Yeah, a small portion.
The business side of this tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not different, the solar garden, the acreage that the solar garden sits on is a commer- is taxed as commercial.
I just seen that, we were discussing the commercial one.
Yeah, it's, it can, it's own egg, but has commercial production on it. That area gets taxed as commercial.
And I see it was a five-zero vote to approve.
And listened.
Correct. Two were gone, Jesse and Cory were gone.
Mister Chair, move to approve interim use permit application number one, six two four zero to allow a rural tourism business in the A-one Agricultural Preservation District of Section Six Township one twenty-one, Range thirty-one, Manana Township. With the conditions.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. And I will second that motion. Is there any discussion?
So I'm gonna go back to this dog breeding. That's a separate, I wanna look into that. That's a separate thing, right? That was never brought, and that, and that's agricultural.
Okay. Because here it says they received permission back in two thousand one.
Right.
For that, so that's already been.
Yep.
For twenty years.
And we do no inspections on that.
Unless you get complaints.
Unless you get complaints.
I am.
Alright.
We'll always inspect if we get a complaint on a property.
So, so if I had a complaint, I would come to you with that complaint?
Yes. Yes, or you can start with the, you know, Department of Animal Health.
Okay.
A lot of times it starts with us and we push it, we either go out and look for them or we contact whoever's in charge of the inspections and see what they want us to do. That's usually how it works.
Alright, we have a motion and a second for the conditional, interim use permit for the proposed project that's on there. Any other discussion on the project? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Alright, Bretzky landscaping, next item on.
Next item on the agenda is a landscaping project, Lake Stella, for Howard and Judith Bretzky. Mike Wickman is the actual contractor for this project. They locate on sixty seven two forty six County State Highway thirty three down in Minnesota. This one's going to be a property owners are planning on cleaning up the shoreline for erosion control by adding riprap. Retaining wall with new steps for better access, adding two steps towards the lake, we're working approximately a hundred and forty feet of riprap and adding approximately seventy five feet of retaining wall. Total materials is going to be about fifty cubic yards of boulder rock, twenty yards of riprap, twenty five yards of rip. There are steps, fifty yards of soil to rearrange for a total project. Cubic yards of material is going to be brought in or moved around on this property. Emily Javen, D and R, hydrologist, had not commented on the project at the time of the meeting. So she still hasn't commented on that, so.
But they're always notified.
They're always notified.
And they, many times don't comment, so, they'd comment if there's a problem, so, alright. Alright, any questions for Greg on that? As I look for a motion.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the application for a conditional use permit to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone. And more than fifty cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the Recreational Development Lake Stella, with the conditions.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bretson and a second by Commissioner Johnson, is there any further discussion?
They are reminded that the planning commission is not the final authority and therefore not to start until after.
Correct. It wasn't started, it wasn't started as of when we visited.
No.
Guarantees between.
It's not an after the fact.
If this is the final approval, it should wait till the final approval, so.
And of course, the thing that always is on my radar is that there is a septic compliance anytime we receive. Action on this, so I want to make sure that gets done.
This one here before they get this, they start to work, they gotta get a compliance into this.
And that flows through your office, that compliance verification. Thank you.
We need a vote on that, correct?
Yep.
Alright, all in favor, if we're done commenting, all in favor of the Bretzky landscaping project, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Storage facility.
Next item I have is for a Tim Carolyn and Dennis Kelly, this is for a seasonal vehicle storage facility in A-one Agro- A-one Agricultural Preservation District. Location sixty two seven forty eight Minnesota Highway seven, Hutchinson, Minnesota. This is for a cold vehicle storage facility utilizing prior poultry barns. Plan is to operate only a couple of weekends in the fall, a couple of weekends in the spring. And then putting watercraft into the buildings with no set hours. Since there are no additional employees, there will only be the owners that will be on the premises at any time. We're going to utilize those three buildings, the buildings are thirty six by two fifty six, that's the smaller one. And then the two larger ones are forty by three hundred and twelve foot, so there's a lot of square footage there. But the doors are fairly short.
Yep.
It's generally about eight foot doors on, so. I think they're not going to beat the big campers or whatever, and stuff like that, unless they rearrange, change the doors on, but, so.
And they are right on the corner between Meeker and McLeod.
Yep.
And that's as close as you can get. Um, I did have a call on this from an individual, not complaining about it, um, just inquiring if they had to have, had to be commercial because they were doing that, and that's not the case.
You know, Mr. You can have many storage units with a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Be zoned to commercial.
And like I said, this, this person was not, just wanted to know if it was going to change that, so. Mister Chair, move to approve the application for a conditional use permit number one, six two seven zero. For a seasonal vehicle storage facility in the A-one Agricultural District for property located in Section thirteen Township one seventeen, Range thirty one, Cedar Mills Township, with the conditions.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Bretson, any further discussion on the Carolyn and Kelly Storage Facility?
I have a question. It states here that there is basically an abandoned trailer home on that property. Yeah. Um, in a situation like this, is there any? Any need to discuss the removal of something like that, does it ever pose a problem? In the area, I'm curious, there, as you drive around, you sometimes see old, you know, trailers on somewhat abandoned farm places. Is, is that a, a problem?
We, we usually only address that issue if we get a complaint.
We get one, every once in a while, we used to get one on twelve out there.
Yeah, we didn't go and complain, but as far as abandoned, it's likely an abandoned house or abandoned shed.
Yeah.
We really don't have a way to deal with that. If we get a complaint on the property, road conditions coming from there.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bretson, I've had that issue and I've had discussions with County Attorney Chief Obine about this, and we really don't have. Other than to control the rodents, we don't have any authority, do we?
No.
Yeah, I wondered, just like with the septic compliance when someone applies, is this an opportunity or a time for things like that to be addressed, or, just curious? Thank you.
Alright. Was there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Neeson Landscaping.
This is another landscaping project for Deana Carol Neeson. Those specialized outdoors, the landscapers are going to be doing this project, the property is located sixty one nine fifty six hundred and ninety third Street, Litchell, Minnesota, Lake Minibel. Um, the plan on this one is the Neesons are planning to place any existing steps, adding boulder walls, adding pervious paper patio down by the lake. Total impervious for the project will be about twenty four percent, they're getting close to the pervious. Total materials for the project will be approximately nineteen cubic yards of boulder rock, eight yards of patio. Walkway pavers and twenty yards of dirt filled for approximately fifty cubic yards. Emily Javen, D and R, hydrologist, had not commented on the project at the time of this meeting either.
Just a point of clarification, um, when we look at the subject, it says it's in Dassel Township, that's just incorrect, it's supposed to be Greenleaf Township up there. So that we have our RBA street.
Move to approve the application for a CUP to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and more than fifty cubic yards of material in the shoreline district. The General Development Lake Minibel, with the conditions.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Ober.
I will second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Johnson, any further questions on the Neeson landscaping? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Vanderlin Landscaping.
Last item I have is for. Deanna Vanderlin, the George Webb, Hapken Specialized Docking Board, this is a property located sixty nine four twenty seven two hundred and thirty third Street, Dassel, Minnesota, this is a Lake Washington landscape project. These property owners are planning on replacing existing riprap and steps. Also planning on adding a boulder wall on the bottom for stabilization along with two hundred square feet of patio. Total impervious after the project will be approximately fifteen point five percent. Total materials for the project, eighteen cubic yards of riprap, forty two cubic yards of boulder rock. Five cubic yards of patio pavers and twenty cubic yards of filled dirt for approximately eighty cubic yards total. Another one of these septic certification, just to try to start the project.
Thank you.
Alright.
It's quite a slope there.
Um. Greg, it, just looking at that four foot retaining wall, are they going to be able to make that and keep the slope?
There was a question for the, I think it was brought up, they say they're going to be able to make it. It's under four.
It's going to be a stretch.
I think they make sure that happens usually. Otherwise they're going to get an engineer involved.
I'll be going to tie it back, I think, I mean, if you tie it in, good.
I was just looking at the amount of down slope, and it's, it's not about how they're put there, it's are they high enough to retain the, keep the? Because that's what they're looking for, is to reslope.
Yep.
I'm not saying anything against project, no, it clearly needs to be done to preserve, it's just.
That's one thing we check, usually not to laugh, but we do, that's why we require this, after seven days or after a week, we want to be notified so we can go up again. See if it's cut to plan as they proposed it.
Yeah. You looking for a?
I am.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the application for a conditional use permit to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and more than fifty cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the General Development Lake Washington, with the conditions.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bretson.
I will second that.
And a second by Commissioner Johnson, is there any further discussion on Vanderlin Landscaping Project? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Greg, as long as you're here, I have a question, if I could go back to the one with the storage sheds and the, and the abandoned, um, trailer home? Just quickly reading through here, is there with a situation like that, no need to have a certified septic system? Is there currently septic used within that trailer home or any of the buildings?
There's no septic in the building, and the trailer home is not being occupied, it's a banner, not, hasn't been occupied for more than a year. We don't require septic compliance. Or if it's not intended to be occupied within a year as well.
Because.
Once it gets occupied, then we're going to get a compliance.
If it's an occupied building with.
If we drive by and notice it's occupied, six months from now, a year from now, we'll. Notification off, tell them you're septic compliant.
Sure. Alright, thank you, I was curious about that.
Alright, thanks Greg.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Bukovich. Diane Winter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've been busy this morning.
Mm, thank gracious, yeah. Lots of company.
It's only ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, the order of business I have before you with Diane is to approve a proposed organizational chart for, um, Meeker County Health and Human Services. Over the course of the last year and a half, actually two years, Diane and I have been working on this. Um, but the last year, we've been able to work with our staff and our leadership team to develop a ground up approach to merging both public health and social services into a health and human services agency. We're at the last stages of that. The organizational chart before you is a culmination of all of that work that we've put forward with our staff. And open it up to you folks for questions, if the question's on the process, how we got here, or what we're intending to do. A lot of ground was covered in the RBA, so I don't want to.
No.
Uplowise your time.
I think, I think Julie and I met with Andrew last week, and we went over this and, and a lot of my concerns were answered because. One of my concerns was you have supervisors, how many subordinates do they have reporting to them, because you don't want to overburden them. But yet, you don't want to, or they don't have enough. So, um, and the one org chart, um, does say how many are under each one of the different ones, and it looks very appropriate, didn't it Julie?
Yeah.
To a good supervisory layout, so.
That was one of the concerns that we had going into this year, and some of the structuring that we did to ensure that there was adequate supervision per employee. Lesson that we learned in COVID, when we got a lot of time buyback from not having our supervisors having to travel and attend meetings. Was that our employee satisfaction, our employee production, our employee engagement increased by having more supervisorial time available. And that's where we increased, uh, uh, our supervisorial, um, uh, profile by having Melissa Stone, like our Minnesota Choices, supervisor come in. And so, as we looked at that structure, kind of the, the dynamic that we're looking at for the deputy director and the director position as well. Is to ensure that there was adequate time for all of the supervisors. Similarly, to what we're trying to do for our supervisors and our direct staff, that they have adequate support. And that those two positions have adequate time to be able to provide that support for them.
That was one of the questions, I think, we asked Andrew too, was those supervisors are not working supervisors, they are supervising the individuals and their caseloads under them.
Yeah, and there's some, there's a significant complexity in today's day and age for all of the programs and the knowledge that the supervisors have to have. And it's very difficult to be a working supervisor and be able to provide that leadership and that ongoing programmatic support. To really make sure that we're meeting the needs of our constituents, but also the programmatic, the financial needs of, of the county.
And the other thing that we asked, and we wanted to be very clear on this, was, I don't mean to speak for you Julie, but.
Out of weeds coming out there.
You're doing just fine.
This, this that you have in front of you is complement neutral right now.
Is, is it what?
Complement neutral, you're not adding anyone, you're not.
No, correct, yes, we're not adding any new staff.
Yeah.
Well, and I assume, I mean, you've, you've got direction from state or whatever, but I mean, other counties, other organizations. I mean, this, this chart didn't come up by accident, I mean, it's, uh, it was developed with, by studying other, uh, organizations, other counties. And setting up a similar program down to work for Meekers, I mean, it's.
Well, and that's kind of been what we've been able to do.
For a couple of years.
With the boards, um, allowing us to do this, is we've looked at a number of other counties that combined, and that's why we started with the ground up approach. But even some of those counties that started with a ground up approach, when they developed their organizational chart, especially at the, the director, deputy director level. They didn't really recognize how, when you're looking to blend the two organizations together into one organization, to maximize your partnerships. Where we believe we'll get those efficiencies, that they kept those separated out. And they're now in the process of retooling all of their organizational charts and their position descriptions at those level to be similar to what we're proposing. And we did have a couple of models that we looked at that were, were very attractive to our intentions, and that is to. Really provide a blended organization where we're working with the, the dynamics and the, the model of public health. That preventative model, that good community engagement with social services and creating a continuity of care that really crosses both of those. Models to the benefit of our constituency. That's the whole purpose of going into a health and human services agency. Other words, you could just keep them separate and Diane and I could work together, right, as we have been. But by putting them together, you're really trying to again create an environment where staff and supervisors are recognized. where staff and supervisors are recognizing what their role is in serving and reducing those deep-end support requirements that we have when a child goes into out of home placement, or we have a person that goes into a civil commitment. Public health does so many things in the community that touches so many people. Wanna create that alliance with our.
And this model, as was discussed, gives us as much reimbursement as absolutely possible.
Yes. That's our hope.
Mister Chair.
There's still some carve-outs for a, a number of the things that public health does. Right, we do have to make sure that when we're doing public health work, that we don't code that into some of our social service reimbursement programs. But public health comes to this with some of its own funding that helps support those as well. And so that's really kind of a, a work in progress, as, as you may know, we're, we're kind of struggling with our accounting department this year, so so we're trying to get all of these things going as well as not lose sight of what we have to do to keep the ball moving.
Well, and stay tuned, the legislature will change up the rules for you here, here along the way too, so I don't always keep you guessing.
Well, Diane likes to bring forward transformation for public health as well, so, so there's some things that are happening there and and as you may be recognizing the Star and Tribe articles, there's some things that I'm bringing forward with that as well.
Yep. Mister Chair, I just got a couple of questions, Diane, are you okay with this organizational chart? Have anything you'd like to see changed?
No, nothing that I'd see changed, I think we're just really testing the waters, um, the next year or so with the, the public health unit and Lori's ability to supervise. Not her ability, um, but her capacity. I, I think as we peel off more of the things that I've been doing, that will now become Paul's responsibility. As well as kind of retooling the, the financial unit, Donna taking on some more of that grant responsibility. I think it's doable, but I would ask that you keep a close eye on that, cause I think, um, I just think we need to, cause I'm not really certain as we talk about the public health transformation or the foundational public health responsibilities that will be receiving funding for sometime in 2024, we don't even know what that looks like yet.
Sure.
Um, there may be some additional responsibilities, plus it's also the start of the community health assessment, which is a, an every-five-year process, but it's just really challenging, kind of being in this spot where we are right now, knowing what it has been in terms of a workload, moving forward, what that will look like for Lori, who, or whoever is in that position.
So, that, that's kind of another one of my concerns, and I look at this and there's one bracket for public health with three, so that's fine. But I don't want public health to get swallowed up. We do a lot of good work in public health and some of that has to continue separate also. Obviously, I've always been in favor of combining whatever we can combine, but I don't want public health to get swallowed up in this organizational chart. There's still public health and there's still, you, you know how I feel about that.
Yeah, on the flip side of that, to the benefit of whoever is in that supervisory position for public health, will have advantage of having other supervisors immediately available on her team, where up to this point, it's been.
One person.
But one person maybe reaching out to the other counties, and we know the challenges of that.
Well, I just wanted.
And I, I'd also just like to note that, you know, there's, there's one
Right.
team here that's clearly public health, but, and we had done this going into this budget year, this adult health function
Right, and choices.
previously fell under public health, but is now under a merge.
And I think that was the idea of the combination, was where we were doing double work to stop that, I get that.
Yep, yep.
We have, public health has a goal and we have to.
Oh, for sure.
Right.
For sure.
Just not having to do with the org structure, just that community health assessment, and I do understand how important that is. How much time is involved in getting that done?
I think that's gonna be led by Sibley County, isn't it?
Well, that falls under 145A, so it falls under Kaiser, the CHS administrator to oversee. They have engaged a, a health educator from Sibley County to provide her with some assistance because she's not feeling like she can do it all on her own, but there will still be local work. It's really hard to compare back to when we did it five years ago, because it was just at the onset of COVID, and so we did kind of a scaled-down process. Um, it's really Kaiser's decision to determine how deep and how complicated the process is going to be. So to put our work on it, I would just be guessing. Yeah, but, but it's, it's intensive, if you wanna do a really good job, you wanna do focus groups. You wanna meet with your constituents, you wanna meet with policymakers. It really depends on if you wanna do it just to do it, or if you wanna do it for the right reasons and everybody answers.
So I think this is my third one, maybe, because the first year I became a commissioner, we did have focus groups. We met in Hutch at the several meetings, and then the next one, of course, with COVID. And, you know, a lot of healthcare now is, is data-driven, so the data is important. The problem with the, no, but it's not a problem with the CHB, but every county has different demographics, right? I think that in the past, you've done a lot of work on the community health assessment, or Meeker, I mean, every county has on the CHB, I think, but, right? Or am I wrong?
No, last time Lori turning and Pam Bagley really took the lead on it, um, because I, that was the year that I was interim, and so I didn't have any capacity. Um, and I could go back and look at the number of hours.
I was just curious.
But to put it an hour on it or a time, it, I would just be guessing.
I think Kaiser will do a good job, it's just it's gonna be distributed, you know, and it's important to the hospital.
I was just gonna say, if you recall, that was a part of our strategic.
And we had a discussion about that at our last exec board meeting at the hospital, but we do have to remember that we're in Meeker County and so, you know, so we have to get our needs addressed also.
It's very important that we have a, a well-done one as well.
I agree.
Because it really speaks to some of our other business partners' needs.
Yep.
As well.
What used to be frustrating for me was, it was always the same things coming up. And I, and I, so is this changing, we've done A, B, C, and D? Because at, at some point in time, you have to look at results, right? Are we doing enough preventive care, are we doing, you know? Tobacco, obesity, mental health, obviously, mental health is kind of becoming a bit our new pandemic, kind of. So, that'll probably be at the top of the list, but it gets repetitive, and, and then I worry that we're not addressing what we need to address, so.
Well, and that's one of the things that if you have a really robust, um, community health plan, you should be able to put some measurements into that as far as measuring your interventions as to which are working and which.
I would agree.
And that's where you look to demonstrate value of your interventions.
And that, that isn't just public health, there's a lot of government departments where we're repetitive, and at some point in time, we have to see some results someplace, so. Well, Diane, I guess you wouldn't wanna consider, well, never mind, I'm not gonna say it. You deserve it, you deserve what you're doing, you sure do. All right.
All right, you looking for anything?
What's that?
You looking for anything?
I'm ready.
Move to approve the organizational structure for the combined public health and social services department as health and human services.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Beth?
Second.
Have a second, babe.
I got one more question, so the deputy director, so we're gonna, we, we don't, we're not advertising for that yet or?
No, so I was gonna mention it after you guys voted on this, but the next step in this process is the compensation classification committee.
Right, that was gonna be my question and then.
They'll be meeting on December first to review job descriptions for not only this, but also the.
Deputy director and the public health supervisor.
The director, deputy director, public health supervisor, but also the changes that you're making to the county auditor.
Oh, okay.
Office. And then all that's gonna come back, those job descriptions will come back for your approval on, um, December nineteenth.
So we don't know what educational level we're gonna be looking at.
That, that's all gonna be looked at as, as part of that process, and then, um, the ratings that'll, that'll come along with it. That's ultimately what you're really gonna prove is the ratings.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the organizational structure for health and human services, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also, before we moved on, I also just wanted to say, you know, we came to you in February of this year to get the approval to continue to move forward with, with doing the merger of the two departments. Since then, um, yeah, I just looked back and I think it was the week after, the week after that, we had a meeting that, um, Paul and Diane's teams led uh, to develop, determine what steps do we have to take to get to the point that we're at today. This process has really been led by Paul and Diane, but also the management team who they work with on a daily basis. Um, it's been absolutely phenomenal to see the leadership that they've taken to, to get us to this point where we're now ready to, to officially have things merged, meet our goal, which was to do this by January first.
And, and I, I need to echo that because I've heard other counties that have had some really, really struggles with this, and you guys and your team, staff, and everyone hasn't made it a smooth process, and, cause this was one of my goals ten years ago when I became a commissioner, so pass it on, great job, we appreciate it.
They did really knock it out.
Appreciate it, let them know we appreciate it, this is gonna be a positive thing, so.
So has the, um, remodeling been a?
It's actually, uh, after the first couple of weeks with some.
After they got moved ten times.
Really well, I don't know where the construction process is at, but we're functioning.
Okay.
I haven't heard so much for WIC yet.
Well, WIC hasn't experienced really anything other than a couple of days where it was, I think, temperature-wise was an issue, probably had nothing to do with the remodel. We've been upstairs the entire time, Lori and myself, staff are working kind of remotely intermittently. Really nothing, I mean, minimal noise to this point. No, no more dust. Good, yeah.
Good.
Good, good, thank you. Fewer walls.
Thanks guys.
Definitely is right now.
Thanks Diane.
Fewer walls.
All right, Andrew.
Uh, I just have a couple of items for you, I had the pleasure of attending the prime health board meeting last Thursday, uh, and wanted to report that the pool is in a very strong financial position. The total accumulated surplus has grown by one point two million dollars since the start of the pool, which is a result of the rate structure and the positive history of low-high claim cases. We had some high claim cases early on in the pool's life, and we've been fortunate that we have not in the past couple of years. The surpluses allow the pool to continue to provide low and stable rate increases on a year-to-year basis. Uh, as you recall, this year, we saw an average increase about three percent from prime health. Uh, since the start of the pool, percentage of membership that are children has increased from twenty-nine point one percent to thirty-three point one percent of the entire pool. The average age of the membership has also decreased because we've gotten more kids involved. It's very positive for the pool, as children are generally low-risk when it comes to their healthcare expenses. The amount of preventative services that members receive has also continued to increase, uh, which will hopefully result in lower costs in the long run. So some really good things coming out of there. Uh, finally, we received a report on the amount paid to the top twenty-five providers. Happy to say that Meeker Memorial was listed as eighteen on that list, with seventy-nine utilizers uh, making two, three hundred and twenty-three claims so far this year, paying eighty-eight thousand dollars directly to our local hospital. Moving on, we do have the roof replacement project at this building, the law enforcement center, that's gonna begin on Monday, November twenty-seventh. Uh, they're gonna be starting on the law enforcement side and then working their way over towards the courthouse. And then, of course, county offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday in observation of Thanksgiving. concludes my report.
There won't be a Black Friday sale here then?
Hopefully not, cause we won't be here.
Oh, okay then. I'll be in the shadows.
Thank you, Andrew.
One of the things that I noticed in the information that we received from Barb were three roof project expenses to the tune of a lot of money. And I'm just curious, is that included in the remodel, or is this above and beyond?
That's, that's the roof project that you awarded separately.
That was several months ago we awarded that.
Yeah, it, that, you purchased, that cost was for the materials, I think we awarded the contract back in May. Um, and so we had the materials finally, we were supposed to start the construction at the end of September, but materials were delayed, we finally received them and then we got the bill for the materials.
And we end up with a home year warranty when this is done.
I think thirty.
Nope.
And it's, I think it's about an eight-hundred thousand dollar contract.
I remember when they, I'm like, holy moly, it was a lot of money.
Um, I think we origi, we budgeted, I believe, nine fifty, they estimated eight fifty, I think it came in at eight-ten.
So, that's, that was good.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Julie, as long as you're going, I'll just.
You bet.
Continue on.
Okay, our last committee reports were given on the seventh. Beth and I had the three county public health meeting on Thursday, the ninth, we were in Hutchinson. Uh, we discussed the budget at that time, it was a three percent COLA was approved, and then it was one to three percent on merit.
Three percent, yep.
Yep, one to that range, uh, salary ranges were addressed and updated. We were informed as to how grant monies are divvied out to each county, and I found that interesting. Meeker County is at thirty-one point three percent of grant monies, McLeod is at forty-eight percent, and Sibley at twenty percent, primarily based on population of the need for those monies. Diana announced her retirement at that board meeting, and there are a couple of vacancies yet within the public health system for employees. And then that afternoon of the ninth, at twelve-thirty, there was an open house over in Grove City Square. Touring the old school, the old school was remodeled into housing, they had fifteen, have fifteen apartments. They used the gymnasium, they have nice meeting rooms, and Paul and Steve joined me on that tour, and it was, we had a very nice Veterans Day program. We had lunch, was, was a lovely afternoon, so that was very nice, that was on the ninth. Then on Tuesday, the fourteenth, I attended the planning and zoning meeting that was held here, and we addressed those particular items today on our agenda. On Wednesday, the fifteenth, then, I had the local public health meeting at the family services building. We had a really nice presentation by Nikki Prosh, Prosh. Uh, she's the director of Supporting Hands, she had a PowerPoint handout, just an excellent presentation for a truly excellent program. Uh, there is an opening on this committee, it's for a three-year term. Please share that information, and if you have anyone in mind, they can contact me, or they can apply on the county website. Paul and I had a personnel meeting then on the fifteenth, that Wednesday, we've addressed that issue here as well today on our agenda. Today, we're here for the regular meeting, this afternoon now, I have the University of Minnesota Extension meeting, we'll be at the fairgrounds, and that's at one-thirty. Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, are we having a, a work session on the twenty-eighth, okay? And then on the thirtieth, we have the budget and levy meeting that evening at six. And that's my report.
Really?
Yep.
The budget and levy, you didn't have on here?
I didn't.
I didn't either.
Did I do that?
Six-thirty?
Did I do that correctly?
What's the date on that?
I think it's six, it's on the thirtieth, let me double check.
Thirtieth at six PM is what I have down, but I could be wrong, but, okay.
Julie, thank you for mentioning that. Should've, that is my fault.
That's okay.
What's your answer?
That's, that's.
You'd have been the only one here, you'd have all the questions to answer.
All right, okay.
That would be all right too, I might, I think I'm sick, I might be sick that day, I'm feeling kinda tough. It's gonna be a long one. Should I go?
Yeah, please.
All right, as Julie said, we attended the CHB meeting, the only thing is, we did change our scheduling, we're gonna go back to quarterly meetings, we, we, uh, we, we changed it during, when we were gonna integrate, and we feel like it isn't necessary now, and we'll go back to having an education piece like we used to have. And we're gonna rotate where we have it, so we'll have it here. They'll probably be arranging with you somewhere to have it during more renovations, but. Um, also, I had a woodland meeting last week, I guess the biggest news out of there is detox had to close early because we had another person that resigned, so we just couldn't fill it, so that is officially closed. I had a hospital, uh, exec board meeting, we just went over some of the structure. Had a discussion about, we'll probably start looking for a CEO in January. Mary Ellen will be coming here into a December meeting, um, she's been in and out and doing a lot of stuff, adjusting, so that's why no one is here today. Um, I also had a Hawk Creek Shelter meeting. The shelter is, for the first time since I've been on there, is running in the red. The shelter is full, we've had to take on more animals than we've ever taken on. They are now starting to dump them out in the country. Two weeks ago, we found, uh, somebody dumped six mini dachshunds that were about ten weeks old, two labradoodles. Uh, the dachshunds all had mange, so we had to treat that. There's a story on there about Tallulah, a little dog that came, somebody that was, if you follow Hawk Creek Shelter, it's really, it's on Facebook. it's on Facebook. All these stories are out there. The dogs are sicker, the cats are sicker and the money is running out. And I had a call from a friend that has a silver lab that they can no longer keep. He's called every shelter in Minnesota, every rescue, everyone is full. So that's why when I, I get irritated when I hear about people selling thousand dollar dogs and raising eight hundred at a time, so. Um, however, the, there's some good news. Uh, we had a record on Give to the Max Day. We ended up raising twenty-five thousand dollars on Give to the Max Day and we had a gal that had adopted and she matched over five thousand dollars uh, in memory of her dog. So if ever you feel like you have, wanna give, we're always looking for volunteers. We're short-staffed. Volunteers, uh, save us a lot of money too if we can have somebody to come and walk the dogs or help with the animals. So we're having, we're in some discussions now about what we're gonna do about long-term funding or long-term fundraising because this is getting to be a real issue. We also had a discussion about, you know, we're getting dogs from every county and then when we go to those counties, they're probably not as willing as they could be to help pay. So, so the discussion is ongoing, but please remember, if you're looking for an animal, there's a lot of them to adopt. And they're, they're good dogs. That shelter does a wonderful job. It's needed, but this is the, the, I've been on there ten years and this is the toughest time we've faced. I think our director said during COVID, everybody wanted a dog. Or they decided they'd breed dogs to make a little extra money. So we have these backyard breeders and they're just, now they're just bringing the dogs back and the cats back. So, so we do a spay and neuter. There's just program for cats. There's just a lot of good things. So Hawk Creek, if anybody's listening, we need followers and we need donations. Paul?
You done a GoFundMe with some of these stories about finding the dogs?
Well, we ran a lot of stories on Give to the Max Day and I shared the heck out of them out of Facebook and that's the best. I mean, we, I knew it would. I was thinking of you every time I shared one. I thought, I hope his wife sees this.
Volunteer, but I won't let her because Booby are all kennel.
That's why, that's why I've been, you know, since I lost my dog and me, I've been thinking about fostering, but for sure I'll be a foster failed. However, I had made up my mind I was gonna adopt two of those dachse's and they took them to PetSmart and everyone got adopted.
My daughter adopted one.
They, they were just darling, but they had mange and somebody dumped them out in the country. I mean, it's just unbelievable, so.
I mean, people don't have that.
And there's another thing, we have a food shelf for animals there. If you, if you're short one month and you need food or litter or whatever, those shelves are empty. They, they sent out a, a thing a couple of weeks ago if you could spare anything to.
Ever contact the producers of like, uh, Purina?
Yeah, I think she does. I mean, she seems to know everybody. But the problem is every rescue and every shelter in Minnesota is in the same shape. So anyway, that's what I have. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Paul?
Well, um, the first one was our PAC moving, which where we approved the budget for the year and it was kind of nice because we were approving a budget. We were working all in the black this year. We weren't in the red for any portion or having to dip into reserves. We have a small reserve we can dip into, but we were able to take our expected income and balance it out and come out with a, a good budget. We did have to, we, we went with a three percent COLA. The employees wanted a five. But we need to look at a little bit about fixing some disparity. So what we did is we budgeted for five, but everyone will get three and then we'll use the other two throughout the course of the year to pick up those ones that are disparate and how they're paid. So we're gonna, we took a little bit different approach to it by doing that. I had some personnel meetings with C P T and C C T, but I, I don't report on those. But I was at those, at those meetings. Then my next one was U C A P and there is just a couple of things I wanna share with you from that because, um, it was interesting. Energy Assistance Program through U C A P, um, there are four majors. Primary heat, which helps a portion of a family's bill. Crisis funding, that helps him, uh, an imminent threat of being disconnected or running out of fuel. And then they do an energy-related repair, so if someone's furnace, let's say, goes out, they will do enough to get it running again, uh, so that there's heat in the homes. Uh, last year they had water assistance, but, um, that is no longer available. Uh, twenty twenty-three, U C A P serves six thousand two hundred and eighty-two households in its, uh, several county area. Um, two million seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, uh, for primary heat assistance. And my, and now I'll get down to our county. Our county, primary heat, seven hundred and seventy-five, uh, residents within Meeker County were assisted with that. Um, crisis assistance, uh, remember this when you're in lieu of being shut off, uh, in Meeker was two hundred and sixteen households. Uh, grand total over all the counties was one million five. Um, furnace repair, replacement, uh, Meeker County had fifteen households that benefited from that, so. And then there is, uh, a senior benefit. If a senior meets the income qualifications uh, and is, cannot pay their bill, uh, U C A P pays a hundred percent of it and they're back to whole. So, um, that's a really good benefit because, uh, my wife works for the utility and she says the seniors are the last ones to ask for help. They really need it and so, um, we help seniors, but not all the seniors that need the help are willing to ask for it and that's, that's kind of sad. So, uh, I just thought you might be interested, um, in a, in a couple of those facts because, uh, it's, it's an organization that really does do a lot of great things.
Do individuals have to contact them or do places like Public Utilities, R E A, do they refer, no?
They must request the application. Yes.
But I think other years they've ran out before they could meet the need. I know we've gotten requests at the Legion where, you know, they needed more money and we've given it. I also took a check down to the food shelf on the Legion a couple of weeks ago and they're struggling also. Uh, there's just, people got their food stuff cut back and prices have gone up. So all the money we were giving during COVID, now they took back and the prices went up, so there again. Another need.
You talk about community, um, one of the things that they're involved in right now is, is down in Worthington, Minnesota, which is not one of the counties that are part of U C A P, but they came to, to U C A P and said, we need help. We don't have a food shelf down here. And there are food needs. And so the community came together. There was a bowling alley that was no longer in use, um, that the person said they would take a very favorable price on. Architects jumped in to donate their time to do the architectural work for the inside. Everyone in the community, the planning and zoning from the city said, we'll do this, this is happening, so forth. And U C A P wrote a grant request, um, and submitted it and if they are funded for that, they will begin construction of the, a remodeling of this bowling alley, uh, which is just sitting there empty. To become the new food shelf down there. Lot of things going, you know, um.
I always think private, no offense to anybody, but private sector just does it faster most of the time and better. You hear about that. When a hurricane strikes, the churches are out there before anybody else gets there, doing, doing what they have to do.
We always hear Paul Bugovich say about how benevolent the people of Meeker County are. We are benevolent, but I think there's a lot of folks out there that are benevolent in other counties too that, you know, it just shows that we'll throw in and go after something when somebody needs something, so.
That's like that shelter thing. It was amazing watching it that day. The money just kept growing and we've never had that kind of response, but people know.
So that is it, Mr. Chair, for me.
All right, I appreciate it, Paul. Um, a couple of things I was gonna mention here, yeah, uh, bottom of our agenda, Aquatic Invasive Species Committee. It says four vacancies. Is that, some of them are, I think there's, are, are up, their terms are up, but are gonna reapply. I didn't think there'd be that many, but Board of Adjustments, there is a vacancy. Economic Development, there is a vacancy from that Grove City area. We're still looking for somebody from that area. Uh, Extension Committee, it shows two vacancies. I think there's been some applicants. I think I saw it come through on that. Uh, Planning Commission, I think, uh.
Planning and Board of Adjustments, I think are, their terms are up, but I believe I think they're reapplying, so.
I know one of them for sure has. I, I don't recall seeing the other one, but I'm.
And these are all on the website, right?
Planning Commission, we might have one that is term limited. One of those, so there will be, and then Public Health Advisory Committee. So I just wanna mention the vacancies if you're interested in serving. And then also, um, we have a thank you to, and it says Commissioners. Everybody but Danny, cause he's not here today.
We were lucky, we were spying that up, wondering if you've got your own thank you. Julie tried to rub it in. She said, I gotta thank you.
Different color ink on it, open on the inside, so it's like, hmm. Thank you very much for the opportunity to pick a gift for my years of service. That was very nice of you. We have received our gift and have used it many times. We will continue to use it. We will remember you, remember you when we do. Thank you, Tony and Sharon Cruz. So we have that and then, uh, my committee reports, uh, not a lot of activity this month. Uh, Grove City Care, they had an open house there that Julie talked about and, and just a, a good program and that was a, uh, co-mingle there, cooperated with, uh, Mid-Minnesota Development Corp. And bringing folks in. There's a lot of interest in using public buildings for, for, uh, repurposing. That was kind of the focus.
Very nicely done.
Um, then I had E D A that night, um, basically not a lot happened on E D A. Take a quick, where did I put it? Anyway, I'm trying to think what we had there. Uh, set our meeting dates for next year. That was one thing we did. Um, and just approved, uh, uh, talked about housing and the continued work that we do with housing there. Are looking for, uh, another person to sit on economic development from that Grove City area, as I stated. Just, uh, continue to work on, I think we have the, they're in the process of closing. We've been doing four houses at a time. And I think we're on the closing on the last sec- the second set of four, so the eighth house was, is getting ready or real close to closing. Um, on that one and I think there, there's a proposal for two twin homes or townhomes and then two single-family homes. So.
A day here in Luchfield?
Yeah, all, um, kinda behind the Eagles over in there.
Activity going on back there. I drove by there yesterday and there's, got a couple of slabs in, so they're gonna be.
Yeah, I think them are for, I think the patio homes are going in next. That's the plan.
Shillings putting something in on East Nelson. He bought that corner lot there. He's been putting fill in.
There's some, there's, he's been applying or Lisa's been in discussion with him. So, so there's some activity there, so that was the big things that we talked about there. Um, and then we have, uh, that's really about it. I had, I was at Farm Bureau, uh, annual meeting down in St. Paul on Friday. Um, not a lot of county, individual county government there, but I was there. Uh, good speakers, good meeting. Their membership is up for the year, um, both county and Meeker County and across the, across the state. So, um, Farm Bureau continues to be a good advocate for rural Minnesota, so. Um, it was a good meeting. I was only there for one of the two-day event. But other than that, and then, yeah, I've got Grove City Care and Board of Adjustments and those things next week.
Mr. Chair, on the E D A board, has there been any interest by anybody incoming in here and building some apartment buildings?
Well, there, I mean, there has been. And the ones on thirty-four now, them lots are for sale, but they're already approved too. Um, but there's been, you got twenty unit, you got twenty unit apartment building in Watkins, which then they did a copy and paste in the twenty unit apartment building in Eden Valley and then they copy and paste it and put a twenty unit apartment building in Dassel. And now he's working with the city of Watkins to put in either twin or townhomes or a combination of both. And he's already addressed the city council in Eden Valley that he, if that goes according, goes well or things work well, he, he would then duplicate that in Eden Valley in probably twenty, twenty-five, so.
Do you think apartments are what we need more so than patio homes and?
No, I, I think it, combination of all of it is what we need. That were built, how many of them are filled?
Full. And actually, I'll be moving out in the next ten days here. And they've been eager to get in mind to show it, cause she says she has two or three people that'll be filled.
That's in Eden Valley.
Yeah, she, they had, on, cause when you sign a one-year lease, so that was up in May. And they had eight people move out of twenty units, so he was kinda nervous about that, he told me, but he's, within thirty days, they're all full again. It's been full also. I mean, there hasn't been much, much happening there as far as.
She won your moving out, if he did get a large damage to.
Bet he did all that partying he has.
Tell you what, we did a lot of remodel work on the farm and it's like. See what we spent out there, but.
This piece that's on number thirty-four over here, I do see the great big for sale sign. And that project we had talked about, there was gonna be apartments and some patio homes and they were gonna be doing.
The city and, and David Tesk have been.
They have a personality conflict or something.
They just have not been able to come together. And, and I think they just, I, I think, I, for lack, I, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but I think David just felt it was best if.
And he is the owner of the property?
Yes, he owns, I think it's.
That's what's for sale. He doesn't wanna pursue that anymore. I've had people ask me, what's gonna happen there? I thought it was gonna be and.
Did they do that in a card or did they do a phone call or what did they do?
Grocery store.
Maybe you got a card.
Usually, yes, it's usually a grocery store or McDonald's where people approach me.
So do they ever put anything in your cards?
Nothing else relevant to come before the board, we'll, uh, we'll adjourn for today. Thank you.
Beth, you got a second?